I'd like to call the Lane County Board of Commissioners meeting to order for this January the 10th. We'll start with adjustments to the agenda, and I have one at this point right now we need to, or I'd like to move the employee recognition to immediately following the adjustments. Okay, any others? Seeing none, then we'll now move to the employee recognition. Mr. Moka Hyskey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to invite District Attorney Perlo, James Tierney to the table, and is there anyone else? District Attorney that you'd like to have up here? Come on up here. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for moving this up. I understand that the District Attorney's Office has an aggravated murder trial here to get to, and so while we appreciate the opportunity to recognize outstanding employees, we also want to make sure that they have the ability to do the work that is called upon them. So I want to share just a few comments, and then I'd turn it over to the District Attorney to make some additional comments. James Tierney is a Deputy District Attorney. He was hired in September 2015 to represent the state in Treatment Court and Veterans Court, and in October of 2016, as the Board knows, the District Attorney's Office also implemented a mental health court. The treatment courts are a priority of the District Attorney, of District Attorney Perlo, and James's commitment to the treatment courts and the success of the participants directly aligns with the strategic plan that the Board has adopted for a safe and healthy county. I'll allow the District Attorney, if she'd like, to share some specific comments, but just a couple of things about James's performance that has led to his nomination and election as the Oregon Association of Drug Court Professionals District Attorney Representative. Judge Rook Lay also has remarked that James is cognizant of his role as a representative of the state, noting his emphasis on public safety and evaluating a participant. When the District Attorney uses discretion on admission to one of these programs, he's been called, and has been called into question. James has been committed to the principle and necessity of an individual's participation in these programs being at the discretion of the District Attorney. You know, I want to just make comment, Mr. Chair, you talked yesterday at the State of the County and credited the District Attorney Perlo for the significant reduction, 90-plus percent reduction in unfiled cases from 1,800 down to...
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four, not that we're counting. Just the fantastic work that District Attorney Perlo and the DA's office has done in a very short amount of time. The impact that that has, not only on public safety in our community, but the funds that we're able to leverage through the Community Corrections Act for other services in the county, in particular for our parole and probation office, is going to have a significant impact, not just today, but years into the future. And so this is, I really appreciate the opportunity to recognize an outstanding employee in James. We thank you, James, for your outstanding work. We have a certificate here for your recognition, and District Attorney Perlo, I'd turn it over to you to make additional comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Board of Commissioners. James didn't know he was getting recognized this morning. He thought that he was coming here to make a presentation to you about Treatment Court, and he's been angsty about it for days. He actually came here from Treatment Court. They're in process right now, and so I really appreciate you adjusting the agenda for us so that James can get back to Treatment Court, and we have an aggravated murder case resolving this morning, so I need to be there. But I do want to mention that James's commitment to Treatment Court is very important to me because Treatment Court works, and the people who successfully complete it are the people who are housed, working, raising their own children in our communities, paying taxes. And not only is James handling our Treatment Courts, but when I'm getting credit for our reduction in, or our increase in filing possession of controlled substance cases, the reduction in no files, James has picked up the bulk of those cases. I think his caseload is at about 1,000.
Oh, geez.
So, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. Other questions, comments from my colleagues? Mr. Farr.
James, welcome.
Good morning.
I saw the look on your face. I didn't know you didn't, you had no idea what was going on here today. That's beautiful. Well done, Patty. You know, as you sit there talking about the things that you guys are leaving here to do, we're doing regular county business. You guys are leaving here to change people's lives significantly and to bring people to, into new lives. It's remarkable the work that you do, James, and I'm really pleased to be sitting here talking to you. I rarely, never have had a chance to talk to you directly before, but Judge Rook Lay said that you have an excellent balance of lenience and strictness, and that's, you know, when you first think about that, lenient and strict at the same time, how can you do that? Well, that is a balance that you achieve, having a human heart and caring for the people that you're working with, but still adhering to your responsibility to make certain that justification happens and justice occurs. And it's just, I'm just really proud to be here watching, looking at that look on your face. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I wouldn't be able to do any of this without Ms. Perlo, Mr. Hasselman, Mr. Schwartz, and all of my colleagues who are so grateful, graciously helped me manage everything, so thank you to everybody.
I might mention James is a Marine.
Well, I'll just say boo-ah, but...
Thank you again, and I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, James. Great job. Okay, well, we'll get back to our regular business agenda items, and the first one is Commissioner's business. We start off the new year after the State of the County with electing, well, I guess the first item is a presentation of a word to the current Board Chair, so I guess we'll start off with that.
This is quite a surprise, I'm sure, for the Chair, presenting this gavel today, and just a few words about what happened in the last year. Last night at the State of the, or yesterday at the State of the County, Fay said that this, in his 12 years as a county commissioner, this is one of the best. I've only been here four years, and I can say that it was the best. The amount of work that we accomplished, the significant trust that we gained in the public, and just establishing the pattern for the future. This was a brilliant year, Fay, and just very, very briefly, a couple of things that I'll reiterate, some of the things that have been said. District Attorney's Office reduced the number of crimes from 1,800 to 74. That was just stated. The establishment of an Equity and Access Advisory Board and reinvigoration of Lane County's efforts to enhance equity, access, and inclusion, all happened in this last year on Fay's watch. Improvements in mental health service, including enhanced services in the Lane County Jail to help reduce the cycle of recidivism for those with mental illnesses. The new Rural Prosperity Initiative that was very important to Chair Stewart, that helps support the diverse and unique economic development needs of rural communities, and reducing our operating expenses and increasing our moody's rating, and reducing the cost of employee healthcare, shrinking the number of fleet vehicles available, improving safety programs, and lessening workers' compensation costs, and far, far more. Fay, thank you very much. It's been my pleasure, my honor, and I've been proud to sit beside you for this last year.
Thanks. Well, I appreciate those comments, but I will, I'll reiterate that it's been an honor to be on this board and kind of be the leader as the Chair. There's no, in my opinion, there's no glory in being the Chair. It's just you schedule the work and we get it done, and I believe that the credit for this year goes to all of us as a board and to our great staff, and I'm just honored to be one of those individuals that either has one hand on the steering wheel, or, as my grandfather said, the gear shift or the gas pedal, but I just appreciate being a part of this organization and this body, so thank you very much.
Will you indulge me in a selfie?
All right. Okay, now the real business. We'll start off with the election of Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Swartz.
I nominate Commissioner Farr to be Chair. Second, yeah.
Commissioner Bozovic seconded, right? Are there any further nominations? Any further nominations? Seeing none, the nominations are closed. All in favor of Commissioner Farr being Chair?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed, pass unanimous. Congratulations. Commissioner Liken?
No, no.
Thought you wanted to say something. So we'll make some switches, but let's, do you want to take care of the business for the, for Vice Chair?
Thank you. Items 2C is the election of the Vice Chair. I'll entertain nominations for Vice Chair. Commissioner Liken.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Bozovic as Vice Chair.
Second.
Any further nominations? Hearing none, I will call for the vote on Commissioner Bozovic as Vice Chair. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, passes unanimously.
Perfect. Congratulations.
Want to maybe be on the outside?
No, I'll hide in the corner.
Dang it. Face spent four years in the center.
I've never been on the outside.
You're on the right side.
Yeah.
What's really surprising is Jay's now on the right side. I mean, left side.
First question, how's my hair? Is it okay? Then we'll move along to public comments. Speakers will be taken in the order they sign up and be limited to three minutes per public comment. Do we have a signup sheet? Thank you. We have four speakers signed up. First is Tamara Miller, followed by Mary Burby. Please state your name and address for the record.
Tamara Miller, 3374 Talon Street in Eugene. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Board of Commissioners. I'm here today to speak to you about a matter that you'll be taking up this afternoon on Smoke-Free Parks once again. I did have the opportunity to attend the most recent Parks Advisory Committee on this subject, and I would like you to know that the Parks Advisory Committee did not recommend the language that was in front of you. They did not vote in favor of the language that you will receive and be discussing today. The other thing is that I wanted you to be aware that if I want to take my family camping, if you allow Lane County Parks to have campsites exempted from the smoke-free ban on parks, that I will have to take my family to a national park in order to take them to a campsite when I don't wish to have people smoking next to me. Would not be able to take them to a Lane County Park. I will not be able to take them to a state park. I would have to take them to a national park in order to be able to camp in a smoke-free campsite. If you do choose to allow smoking in Lane County Parks, I would like to ask you to make, designate some of the campsites as smoke-free so that families have a choice about whether they want to camp in a smoke-free campsite or not, and I think families, and the majority of people in this community with families, would like to have that choice. The other thing is that I'd like to draw your attention to some language on enforcement that's in your packet today. It states, "Campsites are rented for one's exclusive use, and other members of the public are not permitted to enter without the occupant's permission." I would just like to know how I would camp in a campsite that was smoke, that allowed smoking with my family and prevent the smoke from entering my campsite. Therefore, I don't feel like I would have exclusive use of that campsite in order to camp with my family smoke-free. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Burby, followed by Katie Lor.
I'm Mary Burby. Hello, Commissioners, and congratulations to the right and left now.
Thank you.
I'm Mary Burby, and I'm a citizen here today, although I am on the PAC, the Parks Advisory Committee, and I want to take this opportunity to thank all the branches of Lane County that have helped to keep Lane County going while we're having this ice and snowstorm. I think a lot of effort went into keeping things somewhat functional, so thank you to all those divisions. But back to the smoke-free, I guess I'm here to, again, hope that you go with our first recommendation, although we did forget to include the native cultural smoking issue. But I also want to read to you, and I had no idea Tamara was here or that she was citing the national parks, but "The national park's purpose and background is the health and well-being of employees and visitors of the utmost importance to the National Park Service as a protection of its culture and natural resources. Tobacco smoking has long been recognized as a major cause of death and disease responsible for an estimated 434,000 deaths per year in the United States. The health risk affects not only those who smoke, but those who are exposed to environmental tobacco, smoke, excuse me, common known as secondhand smoke. It has been designated a Class A carcinogen. Even when insufficient to cause cancer, this exposure can pose other health hazards for non-smokers such as allergic reactions." Oops. "It can also be a source of discomfort and annoyance. The purpose of the Director's Order is to establish a National Park Service policy for tobacco smoking that will protect employees and park visitors from the health hazards and annoyance of these exposures." So I would like to see Lane County Parks be more aligned with the national parks, and I know we were trying to compare it to the state parks, but I think it's time to take a stand on smoking in Lane County, so this is, I think speaks pretty highly of what my feelings are about smoking in our parks, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burby. Katie Lor, followed by Susan Fanner.
My name is Katie Lor, and I live in Eugene, and I'm a student at the University of Oregon as well as an intern at the United Way Lane County, one of many community health improvement plan community partners. I would like to start off by thanking the Lane County Board of Commissioners for their time. I'm here today to address the ordinance 16-12 for tobacco-free county parks. Our parks and campgrounds should be safe, healthy, and family-friendly places for people to enjoy the outdoors. Parents who are looking for campsites to spend time with their kids shouldn't have to be afraid that they may end up next to a camp full of smokers when they go camping in Lane County Parks. By allowing tobacco use in campsites excludes these families. This is not just a feel-good policy. It has the potential of beneficial results. One of the advantages of implementing tobacco-free parks and campsites is that it will provide families and children healthy environments in which they are not exposed to the health harms of secondhand smoke, and it will reduce the susceptibility of tobacco use in children. My uncle, who passed away in 2009 from throat cancer, was addicted to tobacco. He would expose tobacco to his children by continuously smoking around them. Today, all of his children smoke. When I ask my cousins why they do, they usually respond that due to the constant exposure of tobacco use from their father, they believed that smoking was acceptable behavior. And when I asked them, had their father not exposed them to tobacco use, would they still be smokers to this day? They replied, no. This is one of many real experiences of children growing up to become smokers due to the representation of tobacco use being okay, as well as constant exposure to it, which ties in with tobacco-free parks and the need for that. We, as a community, have the responsibility of addressing the main influences as to why people smoke and tackle them. This ordinance is an important part of the bigger picture, which is to reduce the prevalence of tobacco use. The safety of children, the future of Lane County, is in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lor. Ms. Lor, excuse me. Susan Fanner is the final speaker, signed up.
Good morning, and thank you again for all the work and energy and time that you've put into this matter. It's gone far beyond what I think you anticipated back in 2012 when it first was ignited, if you will. So I am here today, Chair Farr and Commissioners, to support the tobacco-free parks for Lane County. I am a citizen, and I serve as a volunteer on the Lane County Public Health Advisory I support a comprehensive tobacco-free policy for Lane County Parks. Eliminating smoking from all county parks, including campsites, will serve the highest percentage of our residents and visitors. Eighty-three-point-seven percent of our population in Oregon is documented to be smoke-free. Send a clear, concise message. Decrease cost. Manufacturing multiple signs could cost a lot of money. Simplify enforcement, because it's everywhere, and lessen the likelihood of revision secondary to a comprehensive policy now. Be in compliance with the 2016 to 2019 health, sorry, Community Health Improvement Plan with the vision, working together to create a caring community where all people can live a healthier life. Lane won't be alone, as some others have pointed out. There are seven counties in Oregon with 100% smoke-free policies, most of which include the county parks. They are Benton, Klatsup, Deschutes, Hood River, Marion, Multnomah, and Umatilla. Adopting tobacco in smoke-free environments is one of the most effective means for tobacco reduction, and by adding quit resources to signage, Commissioners, you'd be hitting two prevention strategies instead of just one. So to optimum health for all, thank you for your attention, and best of luck in the New Year.
Thank you, Ms. Fanner. That concludes the list of folks who signed up to speak today. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the Board of County Commissioners? Seeing none, I'll close the, close the public comment period and ask Commissioners for a Or remonstrances?
Mr. Chair, I had the opportunity yesterday to thank our professionals that are keeping our roads open and our utilities up and attending to accidents and delivering folks that need attention to the hospitals, and I just want to reiterate again today a thank you to all those individuals that have been probably working nonstop for the last month, maybe with slight breaks in between the storms, but as a resident that lives in rural Lane County and travels some roads that are not well tra, you know, don't have a high level of use, sometimes we're out there manning the roads or going across the roads with conditions that aren't the greatest, and I just appreciate the fact that our staff and other public works departments and that are out there keeping the roads clear, clean, accessible, and the folks that are keeping our utilities up. I've experienced this year several, actually multiple, periods with power out for extended periods of time, so I just appreciate the hard work and understand that, you know, they can't respond to everybody immediately, so, you know, patience is great, and being grateful for them being there is important, so I just want to send thank you to all the folks out there that are doing that hard work.
Thank you, Commissioner Stewart. Other remonstrances? Then one thing I'd like to mention and invite everyone, tomorrow evening at 6:30 at the, let's see, at the University of Oregon's Alumni Center, the Ford Alumni Center, there's going to be a listening session with a number of elected officials are, will be gathered to listen to members of the community, and basically, I'll read a statement. "There is a national conversation about the issues of equity and inclusion, and it's further been highlighted that some members of our community are made to feel less valued, less safe, and less welcome because of their cultural backgrounds, values, and beliefs." The session tomorrow will involve, once again, a number of elected officials, including legislators, county officials, county-elected officials, and city-elected officials. It'll be at the Ford Alumni Center at 6:30, an opportunity for people to talk about what is on their mind, and to receive, I would hope and expect, reassurances that Lane County is, in fact, a safe place to live, and a safe place to go to bed at night and wake up in the morning knowing that you're not going to be persecuted because of your, let's see, I'll read it again, "Cultural background, value, and beliefs." I'd like to make a little bit of a statement just regarding Oregon law and Lane County's commitment to Oregon law. Lane County stands firm in our commitment to uphold the current law, which is ORS 181A.82, which states that "No Oregon Law Enforcement Agency can use monies or resources to apprehend anyone whose only violation of law is being present in the United States." The law limits the extent to which state resources can be used to enforce federal immigration laws, and it states during the court, that during the course of business, state, county, and city law enforcement officers will not ask about a person's citizenship unless it pertains to an ongoing investigation. The community needs to know that Oregon and other counties stopped jail holds for immigration and customs enforcement without additional criminal charges or warrants in 19, excuse me, in 2014 based on a court case in Clackamas County that later became state law. Undocumented immigrants need to know that right now, simply being here will not be used as a tactic to detain them. We're looking, we are looking, as a county, looking into policies and resolutions potentially down the road, that you may hear more details about it, and we do have an Equity and Access Advisory Board that reports to the county administrator, that my understanding is it will be a part of their work plan in the, in the near future to take a look at Lane County's response to concerns that people have who live here currently. Thank you. Commissioner Bozovic.
Thank you. So Commissioner Stewart mentioned this yesterday in the State of the County.
So Commissioner Stewart mentioned this yesterday in the State of the County, kind of briefly, about Moody's looking into our bond rating and looking at possibly upgrading our bond rating, but I just want to restate this a little bit, so folks can understand just how significant this is for Lane County. You know, several years back, the Secretary of State's office placed Lane County on a list of financially on the brink counties. We were in danger of bankruptcy, along with several other counties, although in Oregon we can't declare bankruptcy. That's where we were several years back. We've been removed from that list by the Secretary of State. At the same time, we managed to at least maintain our current bond rating. Moody's only looks at, you know, maybe a thousand of the, of the tens of thousands of agencies they rate annually, you know, so, and about 80% of the folks they're looking at, they're looking at whether they need to downgrade. So we're in that small 20%, maybe 200 or so agencies that they're looking at to possibly upgrade nationwide because of the way we've managed our finances. You know, it started way back when we did things like where we redesigned Lane County in some ways and went from 14 departments down to nine, and then subsequently to eight, to where we got seven different bargaining units to adopt two common health insurance plans, to today where we're self-insured, and we're looking at the second year in a row of a 0% rate increase in our health insurance rates, and all the other cost-saving things we've done, where we've paid down debt with one-time monies, and are saving approximately $750,000 in the last calendar year in debt payments that can go towards services. All those things, and I just have to thank our staff, our financial staff, the various department heads. It's been a team effort over the last six years to go from losing 91% of our federal timber money, $35 million a year, to the point where we're still financially sound and providing services, and we've got bond rating agencies looking at us and saying, "You've done such a good job, we're actually thinking about giving you a higher bond rating," which will ultimately save money in the long run. So I just wanted to spend a minute to focus on that one little item that Commissioner Stewart mentioned yesterday, about how much that says about what Lane County's done to manage our finances, and how important that is for the citizens of Lane County, that even with the loss of all that federal timber money, all the stresses we have, all the demands we have on services, and the expansion and cost increasers that are constantly going on in our community, we've managed to control those costs and maintain a level of service, although not acceptable in a lot of areas, you know, we all feel like we could do more. We're still doing it in such a great way that an outside entity is looking at us and saying, "You guys are actually financially stable enough to actually have your bond rating improved," and we're already have a very good bond rating. You know, we're already AA3, which is considered a very good risk. They're looking at getting us even higher. So it's just an amazing thing, and I want to thank Administrator Steve Moskrahiskey and the finance staff, and all of your management team, and the rest of the employees at Lane County that really worked hard to do that, so just want to take a moment to mention that and appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner Bozovic. Any further remonstrances? Hearing none, we'll move along to emergency business. Mr. Moskrahiskey.
We have none.
No emergency business council, Commissioners? Then we've already had our employee recognition, we'll move along to the consent calendar. The, we'll be taking action on the consent calendar now. A full listing of all agenda items can be found on www.lanecounty.org, including items on the consent calendar and full detail of the items that are being passed on the consent calendar. The items are considered routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of items unless a Commissioner pulls the item for discussion, and if discussion is desired, the item has been, has been pulled from discussion. So we have before us a consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Bozovic.
I move approval of the consent calendar for January 10th, 2017.
Second.
Moved in second, a discussion to the motion. Seeing here in none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Passes unanimously. Thank you. And let's see. Moving right along, County Council.
HACSA.
Excuse me. There we go. Thank you. There we go. Item 8 is Order 1701-10-15 in the matter of appointing an interim resident commissioner to the HACSA Board of Commissioners. Ms. Moskrahiskey.
I think we have representatives here from HACSA that discuss the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie.
One representative from HACSA. Let me remind everyone who doesn't know, HACSA stands for Housing and Community Services Agency. We serve about 5,000 Lane County families in our two major programs, public housing and rent assistance. In November, so, I'm sorry, let me also remind everyone that the HACSA governing board consists of the five county commissioners plus two HACSA residents or participants in HACSA programs, one of whom resigned in November. Hugh Massengill submitted his resignation in November, and his term goes on until January of 2018. So at the December meeting, apparently I left early, there was a discussion between the board and Jacob Fox, our executive director, about recruiting Dewanda McKinley, who is a former HACSA board member, to fill out the rest of Hugh's term. Dewanda has been an active participant with HACSA. She is on the RAB, which is the Resident Advisory Board. She's been, let me see what else she's been, the president of the Riverview Resident Council. She's dependable, reasonable, nice, and we'd really like to have her fill out the rest of Hugh's term.
Excellent. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, Commissioner Bozovic.
I'd like to move approval of Order 1701-10-15 in the matter of appointing an interim resident commissioner to the HACSA Board of Commissioners.
Second.
Moved in second, a discussion to the motion.
Mr. Chair. I would just state that Ms. McKinney has already served on this board. She was a very good, in my opinion, a very good member. She lives in the Cottage Grove area in one of the HACSA housing units, the Riverview Terrace, and I believe that she would be a great addition to the board, and, you know, maybe she could help us deal with some of those aging facilities, like she had to dealt with, she dealt with and the residents there, extended period of time when the elevators weren't functioning, so I think she could probably add some, some good beneficial insight to making better decisions or helping us fix problems, so.
Perfect. Thanks, Valerie, for being here, and please pass along the congratulations to Dewanda for reappointment.
Will do.
Looking forward to meeting her for the first time.
Okay.
And any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 9 is the Sheriff's Office, Public Safety Renewal Discussion with Sheriff Trapp.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Need to go upstairs and listen to the presentation at Ms. Jones' desk while I get my machine working so I can see the written materials.
Very well. I'll give you about 90 seconds to get up there.
I'll be up there and back in a flash.
Sheriff Trapp, welcome.
Good morning, Chair Farr, Commissioners. So you have received a letter I sent you earlier, and it contains in detail my request for a referral of a renewal to the existing GLU services levy this spring, and I'll just go over kind of the high points of what's contained in that request. So as you know, in 2013, May of 2013, the board referred a five-year youth and jail, youth services and jail funding levy to the ballot. It was a levy that approved 55 cents per 1,000 assessed value. The Lane County voters supported, passed this levy. The levy funds 255 local offender defendant jail beds and 16 treatment and detention beds in youth services. The language of the ballot measure was that that was the minimum requirement. We would have to maintain that as the promise of the levy. Since the passage of the levy, we have actually been able to increase the jail capacity over 250%, and from 125 local jail beds at the time of the, of the passage of the levy, to today at 317 local jail beds. This is the most capacity that this jail has had since January of 2003, 14 years ago. Since the passage of the levy, we have had zero capacity-based releases of pretrial Measure 11 defendants. We have had zero capacity-based releases of pretrial violent felony defendants. We've had more than a 63% reduction in the monthly average of capacity-based releases of defendants and offenders. There have been two independent audits of the first two years' use of our levy funds, confirming that the Sheriff's Office and the county have used the funds as promised and that we have kept the promises made to the voters. The jail has increased mental health services through enhanced contract with the medical provider, CFMG, and with a new contract this year with Lane County Behavioral Health. These are dramatic and measurable results, and it is critical that this funding continues uninterrupted. We are currently midway through the fourth year of the current levy funding. Recruitment and retention is a big issue for us. Our challenges in this area are compounded with only one year of funding remaining, as a certainty. As of now, with only one year of funding remaining, many of our newly hired and trained deputies, their anxiety about this creates them considering maybe a Plan B employment option. Only one year of funding can be offered to new applicants. Qualified applicants are more likely to choose a different agency that offers funding stability. And then, you know, how big is our recruiting challenge? Levy funds have created 45 new deputy sheriff positions. Filling them has been a huge undertaking. It's consumed many hours of our HR and other staff time. Since the passage of the levy nearly four years ago, we have hired 93 new deputy sheriffs, a little more than that, I sworn three more this morning, but 93 as of December. However, these 93 new deputies have only increased our staffing by 33, because while attempting to fill the additional positions, we continue to work against retirements, resignations, and terminations, which have totaled 60 in the same period. We are making headway, but cannot afford to lose our momentum. I'm asking you to refer a renewal of the jail youth services levy to the May 2017 primary election ballot. This will allow us to get ahead of the recruitment-retention concerns. It will also help assure continued funding of the incredible gains we have made in our community's public safety. Importantly, though, I'm specifically requesting that you refer a renewal of the existing levy in the language that is the same as the original, in the 2013 ballot and board order, no changes. It is critical that we continue to provide these services at a level the community has agreed to support, and to do so with the highest probability of success. And I thank you for your time, and we'll answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Sheriff Trapp. Any questions or discussion? Well.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Sheriff, for bringing this before us today. We suspected we needed as a body to move this back to the public for hopefully their approval for additional years of funding our jail. So if I understand this right, you're asking us to place it on the ballot exactly the way it was in 2013, and I'm assuming that's this May?
Correct. May of 2017.
Okay, and so it'd be a year ahead of time, but I see a lot of benefits in, in that standpoint that, you know, provided we didn't receive their support, we'd have additional attempts before the funding actually ran out, so. Have you had any, you know, check-in with the citizenry, you know, polling or anything that, you know, gives us confidence that this is the right time and the right product to ask for renew?
We have. We've actually have been attempting to have some community meetings the last couple of weeks, which have been derailed by weather. So we do have one scheduled this week, Wednesday, which apparently we're supposed to have snow again Wednesday, so we'll see if anyone shows up. But we will continue those conversations with the community as we did in 2012 and 13, prior to the passage of the levy. And in general, the conversations outside of formal meetings have, have continued to be supportive. There have been a couple of, of community surveys. Both of them are responding, are providing responses from the community at a stronger support level than existed at the passage of the levy. The levy passed at 57%. Current surveys are in the mid to upper 60% support, and so I think that, you know, there's, hasn't been a change in the community's understanding and perspective that this is, in fact, one of the most critical public safety functions in the county, both for our youth and our adult offenders and defendants, and that the jail's staffing is an impact to all law enforcement in the county. It's not just a Sheriff's Office issue. It affects the Eugene City Police Department, Springfield City Police Department, all the other state police and other smaller jurisdictions equally. And so all those things combined, I think it's, we've done a very careful diligent effort at making sure that we are coloring within the lines on this, that we are keeping our promises to the voters in every way, and excitingly, we've, we've exceeded the promises of what the levy was to provide, and while doing that, we also were able to effectively reduce the levy amount collected this current budget year by 30%. So all those things combined, I think the community is seeing that and recognizing that, you know, this has value that needs to continue.
Excellent. I'd just say you, you and your staff are doing an excellent job, great work, and I appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stewart. Further questions or comments? Commissioner Bozovic.
Thank you, and, you know, I appreciate you bringing this forward and bringing it forward early, because I understand the recruiting issues that you're dealing with. Brother-in-law that serves in law enforcement across the country, you know, talks about similar issues, and his son just entered a police academy there and is in his first week, and having, having to deal with the issues of being a 20, early 20-something in his first, he never served military, so he's going, going in cold to the police academy. The original passage of the levy, when we had the public hearings, we heard from everybody, from the head of sponsors, to the head of Lamont Family Treatment, to the folks from Serenity Lane, to even the public defender's office, about how important it was to have these jail beds open. And one of the things I think that people don't realize is just what we've done inside the jail to change, you know, how we are dealing, particularly with folks that have mental health issues, how we've changed our contract with, on the, on the medical side with CFMG, to, to make sure we're covering those bases, how we've added these three new positions to, to help with that, and, and having those extra jail beds available allows folks to be there long enough to get those, you know, to be assessed and diverted into other programs versus, you know, the revolving door of having them in and out within 24 hours and back on the street completely without assessment, without treatment. So can you speak to, a little bit, to how this, you know, if we don't have these beds, how it will impact some of the other programs, and specifically some ones that folks may not be aware of in the public? Some of the programs that were, were funded through the Justice Reinvestment Act to try and, you know, keep the state prison population down by trying to, you know, divert people early, and some of the programs that we even got mentioned this morning, Veterans Court and Treatment Court, if we don't have, you know, these 255-plus local beds, how does that affect some of those programs and their ability to function and have sanctioned beds available?
Right. Thank you for those comments. It's, Lane County and Marion County have both been essentially on a watch list by the state for the number of referrals to the state correction system over the last several years. Lane County's problem stemmed from the fact that we had little capacity to hold local offenders, local defendants, pretrial, and primarily with property crime and drug crime offenders. We were unable to hold- We were unable to hold them pretrial to get them to a courtroom. And so they were released because of capacity, and they would fail to appear in court, and compounded by the fact that the district attorney's office staffing did not allow prosecution of many of these cases on the first, second, third, fourth, fifth time offenses. So they weren't held in jail to see a courtroom. They weren't prosecuted or filed on because the district attorney's office didn't have the staff to manage the caseload at that level. And so these offenders would then create a docket of multiple cases that then would get the attention of the prosecutors and the courts. But the attention was so severe that when they did get prosecuted, they went straight to prison instead of having an intervention at the county jail where they could be introduced to services and treatment and other very effective functions and options that could change the course of their behavior. So instituting those programs that are very effective in keeping people out of prison really can only be done when we have jail capacity to actually hold people accountable at the local level, keep them in the jail, keep them in front of the courtroom, in front of the judge, until they work their way through the program. The, you know, there's a couple of programs in the jail, or in the local system now, 416 program specific for property offenders, that we have to maintain a certain number of jail beds just for that program to hold those persons in violation of the conditions of that program accountable. And if we don't have those, it's no different than a court ordering somebody to go to drug treatment. And if you don't go to drug treatment and complete it successfully, you have to serve a jail sentence. What if you don't have a jail sentence available because there's no room in the jail? Well, I don't have to go to drug treatment. What's the judge going to do to me? So all of the teeth, all of the impacts of supporting effective programming is eroded entirely when there's no local jail system. And when we were at 125 local jail beds before we passed this levy and added the increased capacity since, we were releasing people on homicide charges. We had, in 2012, we released three people pending homicide charges. And so this is just to illustrate the severity of the crimes that are in the jail, that we were releasing the most dangerous at the time. It didn't mean they weren't dangerous. So we still have, you know, I said, we've released early capacity releases by 63 percent. Well, 63 percent's not 100 percent, it's a long way from 100 percent. So we're still releasing people early, early from sentences. We're releasing people early before they go to court, pretrial. And so we've, we have not completely solved the jail capacity issue, and we're a long ways from it. But I think we are at a point where our community's safety is substantially better than it was almost four years ago, and it is at a level that is appropriately sized to the rest of Lane County's public safety system. And until, or unless, we make increases in services in other areas, we're at a point that is functional. It's not perfect, and we have a lot of room to go to increase the capacity and make it a much more functional system across the board. Where we are today is in a good spot.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Commissioner Bozovic. Any other questions or comments? Just a couple of things. Sheriff, you're asking us to do, to ask the public to support the same thing we asked three years ago, identical.
Correct.
And which, three years ago, we had a 57 percent approval rating, 57, passed with 57 percent. A couple of things I'd like to point out is that, you know, three years ago, we made promises. You made promises, Sheriff Turner at the time made promises, and we kept the promises. By and large, not only kept the promises, but exceeded the promises. With 317 beds available currently, the promise was 255 beds with the levy. That's pretty stellar work on the part of you and your staff, Sheriff Trapp, and you're asking us to move forward and just essentially ask for the same, the same thing that people have supported already. Seems reasonable to me. And, you know, I'd like to point out that you said we released in 2012 three homicide cases pretrial. And just this morning, Deputy, excuse me, District Attorney Pearlau was talking to us, and she said that she had to leave because there's an aggravated murder charge being heard just upstairs right now. Possibly that charge wouldn't have come to that point if we didn't have, that's an extrapolation, but, you know, the fact that we were releasing homicides and District Attorney Pearlau, whose staff has affected a 94 percent increase in charges filed, in large because of what you just pointed out, the whole public safety system, which loses teeth if we don't have the jail bed capacity. So thank you very much. Any further discussion? Commissioner Bozovic?
So the, I guess the question I have, and I'm looking to both you and the administrators, what steps does the board need to take next and to, if, yeah, it sounds like there's at least been express support for moving forward with this. What do we need to do next? Do we need to have a motion to set up a hearings and all that? What are the next steps?
Sure. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bozovic, the deadline for filing materials, ballot materials to the county clerk is February 24th. The board is down February 4, I should say, February 14th is the last board meeting before the 24th. So the last opportunity for the board to take action is February 14th. Excuse me, so we have, you know, you're really looking at about a one-month period of time. You're also down next week. So we have three meetings between today and February 24th. So the potential is that you could have a public hearing on ballot title and language on either January 31st or February 7th, and then that final decision needs to be made. The action to approve the ballot caption, question, and summary via board order would need to be made by February 14th, if not sooner. So three board meetings on January 31st, February 7th, and February 14th that you need to hit. Again, we did a, it's my understanding that there was a public hearing held in 2013 prior to, or it may have been 2012. I'm not sure if it was.
It was 13.
It was 13, okay. So if you want to follow the same process, then we would do a public hearing with the ballot title and allow for those comments to come forward, and then the last action is February 14th. The other question on the table is a voter information pamphlet. If you'd like to pursue a voter information pamphlet, then we need a decision on that, and I think a decision on that probably needs to come around the February 14th deadline as well, so that we can put together that informational material and deal with any other technical aspects.
What about explanatory committee? Do we need to start that process also?
It, I believe it depends on if you do a voter pamphlet or an informational pamphlet. So if you, if you do a voter pamphlet, I believe you do need to have the pro-con committees formed. If you do an informational pamphlet, you may not need to. So we can bring that information back to you. Then the board is down next week, I should say, the next two weeks, is that right? Is January 31st, then?
No, we're just.
Are we up the 24th? Sorry.
We're up the 24th, yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, I offer, so we can report back to you with more details on, you know, the process, depending on the board's decision here today, either on the 24, probably on the 24th, I think we would want to come back with sort of a timeline and steps that would then allow for the potential of a public hearing if you want to do that on either the 31st or the 7th.
Does it require an ordinance to place this on the ballot, or is this just by motion of the board?
Yeah, by motion of the board, a board order.
Okay. So we don't have to have the two weeks between when we actually draft the language and hold the hearing? That was my only concern, was to make sure we got that. So I guess on the 24th, the staff will, can bring the language, which should be easy to write, seeing we want to try and keep everything the same.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Bozovic. I'm anticipating that Commissioner Swanson will be down in a few moments following his technical adjustments. So can keep the discussion going briefly. Looking at the dates, then, we have the 24th, the 31st, and the 7th before action on the 14th, which gives us an opportunity to get information regarding a committee that needs to be formed, an informational committee, and then look forward to, look toward a public hearing potentially on the 31st, with further action possibly on the 7th, and a decision on the 14th. Does that timeframe sound good? Do you need a motion today to that effect, or is just the instructions, is that going to be adequate?
I'd like to make a motion, actually, if, or either, any of us, but I believe I'd like to make a motion that we direct, that we support the sheriff's request to place a renewal of the sheriff's jail bed levy on the May 2017 ballot, and direct staff to bring back information on January 24th stating the steps we need to, and the actions we need to take to make that happen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, then we'll have time for discussion on the motion. Mr. Mokrhaeski, do we have any indication as to whether or not Commissioner Swanson will be joining us?
I'm told that the computer issue is being resolved, and he should be down here momentarily.
Okay, then we do have a motion and a second discussion to the motion. Then I'm going to stand down for just, let's give it two minutes, giving Commissioner Swanson an opportunity to get down here. And the letter that you wrote, Sheriff Trapp, is available online to anyone who wishes to read the entirety of the letter by going to www.lanecounty.org and going to this agenda item, which is 8A, excuse me, 9A, and click on View Material.
If I could.
Commissioner Bozovic?
So with a moment to fill here, I want to just talk a little bit about some of the work that Lane County's done in collaboration with our partners to deal with the whole issue of our prison population reduction and trying to meet those targets that the state has set forward and trying to prevent opening of the women's prison. And really, it's a pretty amazing story what, that Lane County's been involved in. And our local Public Safety Coordinating Council for Lane County, which is, you know, most folks probably aren't aware of, it's set up by statute, but it's all the various public agencies that deal with public safety are involved, including Lane County Mental Health. The work that they've been doing over the last five to seven years, the recidivism rates in Lane County have actually gone from where we were about five percentage points above the state average for people that reoffend within three years of either being put on parole or probation, probation, has actually dropped to about 5 percent below the state average, while the state average has increased slightly. So that while the state average for recidivism has been going up, Lane County's has gone down and actually crossed below the state average. So we actually have a below-average recidivism rate in Lane County now. And it speaks to the work that we've been able to do with the justice reinvestment dollars in collaboration with all of our partners that are on the Local Public Safety Coordinating Council. And the fact that we've had these jail beds available to make the programs involved in those diversion and reintroduction of folks, everything from, you know, as we're trying to get the sponsors 14th at Oaks facility up, which will really help with folks post-prison coming out, reintegrating with society, to the Treatment Court that was featured this morning in our discussion. All of those things together have made us have this incredible turnaround in our recidivism rate in Lane County. And part of that helps us with our prison usage and keeping the prison population forecast down, which saves the state hundreds of millions of dollars in annual costs and in construction costs. So that's really important work we've been doing, and the jail beds we're getting ready to take a vote on are a huge piece of that work. Without those jail beds available to those programs, they wouldn't be successful.
Thank you, Commissioner Bozovic. Commissioner Swanson, we have before us a motion and a second, which recognizes three dates, excuse me, four dates, the 24th of January, 31st, and 7th, and the 14th being the deadline for the decision to place this on the ballot. Do you have any questions or discussion?
Yes, I do, and thank you very much, Sheriff Trapp, for giving this briefing, and I was following it in Ms. Jones's office. And one of the questions was asked by Commissioner Stewart about the polling on this, and I'm wondering if that can be made public and if it is something that you'd be comfortable with as far as releasing, so that the public and the board can more, go a little more deeply into what was asked and all of that.
Certainly. One of the surveys is a county-owned survey, the other is through a nonprofit, so I can certainly follow up on that for you.
Yeah, okay. I think that if the county won, that would be the best, and I think it's up to the nonprofit as to whether they want to do that, but I think it would be helpful for our discussion and for the public to know that the degree of support is there, and I believe you said 60 percent in the response to Commissioner Stewart's question. I think that would be very helpful. The other thing that I wanted to add was, and I think it was Commissioner Bozovic that was asking about the, or stating the support that we had, the broad support we had in the last cycle, and how important I think it is to make sure that we are reaching out to those folks so that when we come to a decision point at the board, that we have it on record that those same organizations are encouraging us to do this, and that there's early buy-in on the proposal. And those are really my only comments, and I do support this.
Excellent, thank you. Further discussion to the motion, Commissioner Stewart?
Mr. Chair, as I peruse the audience, I noticed that we have our Health and Human Services Director and also our Division Manager for Youth Services, Nathleen Renner. I was wondering if, you know, there is a component of our youth detention that's included. Is there any comments that they would like to make at this time or numbers?
Sheriff Farr, Commissioner Stewart, thank you. I neglected to introduce them at the onset. I told them I'd be much more comfortable if they were here to back me up when it came to any questions about youth services, since I'm not intimately familiar there, so I'm glad to let them share in any of the conversation about youth services.
Good morning. I'm just glad that he lets me have his back. He trusts me. So, Sheriff Farr, commissioners, listening to your discussion, there are a couple of things, points I want to make. When this was passed last time, our treatment program was pretty much on the way out. We didn't have the funds to keep it open. And the ability to have the levy pay for eight of those beds and then look at creative opportunities, solutions with our 4E funding to fund those other eight beds really has allowed us to run that program and that program to grow and thrive. In addition, our, we had only eight beds of a detention, and Nathleen could talk more clearly about this, but, you know, detention is part of a larger program, but it's an important part, just as the sheriff talked about jail beds being an important part of a system. Our detention beds are an important part, and we were able to maintain our eight beds with our general funds and then eight more beds with the levy funds, and they have been integral in our success of our youth, coming back and getting healthy and getting back into the community. So I don't know if Nathleen has anything.
I would just said that I really appreciate the opportunity to partnership with the sheriff on this levy and that knowing that our youth are going to be their adults if we don't do what we can do for them when they're kids, right, and that their adults were our youth that we weren't able to serve before. And I go down to detention and to Phoenix numerous times every single week, and I can tell you that we not only need those beds, but that we do really great work on behalf of these kids. And there's many youth that come through there, and they have a lot of trauma and a lot of stuff that have brought them there. And I'm really glad for them that they were able to land here in Lane County because of the services and the compassion, the care that they get from our staff there. So thank you very much.
Thank you for sticking forward, Alicia and Nathleen. I'd like to also mention that Lisa Nichols is in the audience today from Lane County Behavioral Health, which is significantly affected by the added beds in the jail, and additionally, the added focus on behavioral health issues in the jail. Thank you. Further discussion to the motion, Commissioner Licon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say thank you very much for coming up, because I think at times what happens is that the work that you're doing on behalf of this levy sometimes gets lost. And because we do call up the sheriff's levy, and for, I would say for obvious reasons, but I think the fact that, and with that increase, little bit of increase that's coming your, that does come in your way, I think will really help in the long term as well. And I, I think what we, the part that sometimes gets lost is that when you have the opportunity to rehabilitate the youth, they can go on to productive society. And where at times with adults, it's a little bit, can be more challenging. So I think that... So I think that this piece, and I really want to say thank you for coming forward and discussing this, I was supportive from day one, continue to be very supportive. I think that the idea of sanctions and treatment is, and I think that we have to include that, it's both sanctions, sanctions and treatment, really ends up becoming a much better long-term opportunity for Lane County and the citizens here. And so I think having, actually, when I'm seeing the three of you right there, this is really good, it's a good picture. It's law enforcement, youth services, talking about what can we do to make sure our county is going to have productive folks in the future. And maybe they made a mistake along the way, you know, people do, but if there's an opportunity to help get these folks, especially our youth, back on track, I think it makes Lane County so much stronger. So I really appreciate the fact that you came forward and talked about this. Very grateful, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Licon. Seeing no more discussion, Commissioner Bozovic.
I want to just jump in here for a minute while we've got youth services up here, having been the one that added the extra nickel for youth services. There is a good reason for doing that, and one is that, you know, we were at the edge of being effective as a detention treatment for youth in this county. The other was how much easier it is to deal with criminogenic and addictive behavior at, when folks are minors, and how much more success rate there is and what that does for their adult life and avoiding jail and all that. Whether, if you can interrupt that cycle as a youth, they're so much less likely to end up homeless and dealing with those issues, or end up in our jail and prison systems, or, you know, having long-term issues, which breaks that cycle of when they start having children and the aces those issues create, if there's, you know, parents with those issues. So, adult, for folks with adverse childhood experiences, aces. But, so it was really important to me to add that piece into this, and it's been great to see how effective. But the one thing that kind of hasn't been mentioned, and one of the things that kind of got rescued by our ability to utilize monies in different ways, is when, before the levy passed, we did not have 24-hour intake of youth at the youth services. So that if a minor was arrested late at night or early in the morning, they were held in adult facilities pending the opening of intake at youth services around this county, which could be an extremely bad experience for youth, you know, because it's a completely different environment and exposed. One of the things the levy allowed you all to do, and maybe you can talk to us a little bit, is to go to 24-hour intake. Can you, and the sheriff might be able to also chime in on how that impacts the police division. How important is it to have 24-hour intake open at youth services?
Happy to. Thank you. So we do have 24-hour access for law enforcement to be able to bring in youth, and it is very important for them to be able to come in at any time. I mean, there's the part that we need to always have sight and sound difference walls between youth and adult being in an adult facility, and there's also just the trauma-informed piece of that, about having youth in a youth facility when they come in. So it would certainly be a hardship for law enforcement to not be able to bring youth at any time. And we get a shift update every eight hours on the management team at youth services, and we can see every shift, how many youth are coming in, and they certainly come in around the clock. Thank you.
I would, thank you, Commissioner. I would add that the challenge for law enforcement in that circumstance is holding that youth in custody pending the opening of youth services. The jail has never allowed youth to be lodged in the county jail. And so what that means for law enforcement is that you effectively have nowhere to take that youth in the interim. So you take them to your police station, our deputies would bring them to the courthouse. We do have holding cells in the courthouse that are vacant at night, they're used for court time during the daytime. So we do have ways to do that, but then you have to have a deputy with that youth. You can't leave them unattended or unsupervised. And so it takes that person, for us, it's a big impact, because with three or four deputies working the whole county, it takes 25 or 30% of your workforce off the street while you're managing the custody of that youth. So other agencies have different impacts, but all of us have the same juggling act as what do we do with that youth in custody. What it also does is sort of encourages us as law enforcement officers to find a way to have a disposition of that custody without waiting the length of time necessary to put them in at youth services. So we issue them a release on a citation or other method, which isn't necessarily the best option for that individual circumstance. So there's a wide range of impacts that occur there to law enforcement.
Thank you for raising that point, Commissioner Bozovic, and we had an opportunity to tour the juvenile facility a couple of months ago, and it was really eye-opening and really encouraging to see the invigorated nature of the work being done there, based upon the passage of the levy and presumably and hopefully the continuation of the levy. Thank you very much. Further discussion to the motion. Seeing, hearing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sheriff, thank you. Item 10 is County Council. I see no council present, therefore no county council issue.
Single had no updates.
No updates at all from county council.
His designated spokesperson.
Congratulations.
For today.
Then we'll move forward with the county administration. Mr. Mokrheyski, announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a couple of updates. First, enjoyed this Eugene State of the City address last night and had the opportunity to meet the mayor-elect, who is now the mayor, officially was sworn in last night, and they had an outstanding event there. And then Thursday evening will be the Springfield State of the City, and so look forward to attending that and supporting our city partners and the great work that they're doing. I wanted to update the board, also that I had the opportunity last week to participate with our Health and Human Service Department leaders at their leadership team meeting. And one of the issues that was discussed is the flu season, and I wanted to just give you a bit of an update here on what we're seeing as it relates to influenza. We have had 12 confirmed outbreaks, and unfortunately, eight deaths have resulted from influenza-like illness. We have yet to see the traditional disease peak or the point at which we would expect to see a steady decline in cases. And this, our public health officials are indicating that this season is shaping up to be the worst since at least 2012. Since only, so I just want to share some information with you from our public health staff, from Dr. Lugke and our public health staff. Since only a very small percentage of individuals are actually tested due to resource constraints, our public health staff uses a set of CDC criteria called influenza-like illness to describe an individual's condition that includes most or all of the symptoms of influenza but lacks a confirmed laboratory test result. Fortunately, our communicable disease team is hard at work monitoring active outbreaks, working with affected facilities to prevent further infection, assessing clinical symptoms and prescribing appropriate medications for facilities that lack medical directors, and informing our public about vaccination and proper respiratory hygiene and administering flu shots. We've actually, this last quarter, have given over 5,000 flu shots, just in the last quarter alone, and we expect the current situation to evolve, so public health will continue to provide updates to the board as well as to our community. I can share with you, as I'm sure all of you have stories yourselves, I have, we have a family friend and a neighbor who both have confirmed cases of influenza, and both those individuals did not receive flu shots. And so this is, you know, I think a reminder for all of us as we talk about the impact on our families, our neighbors, our communities, the public in general, the need for vaccination to make sure that our public stays healthy. The last item, Mr. Chair, that I just want to update on is tomorrow we have a, our leadership team meeting. This is the annual kickoff of our budget process for next fiscal year, fiscal year And Commissioner Bozovic shared some information with you, and we'll talk more about these areas. We were notified recently that Moody's is reviewing us for a bond rating upgrade. They're actually reviewing around 280 cities and counties around the country. There are about 25,000 cities and counties in the U.S., so that represents about 1% of municipal government, cities and counties and other taxing districts around the country that are, that are being looked at by Moody's. So we'll see what the result of that is. It certainly is possible that they won't make a change. It is true that we have relatively high bond rating as it is despite the challenges that we faced in back in 2011 when Moody's reviewed the county, the last time it reviewed the county and affirmed the AA3 rating. It noted the challenges that the county faced with declining federal resources and declining reserves, and that was six years ago. Of course, we know we've seen the elimination of SRS since that period of time and the decline of our fund balance due to steady decreases in resources. So we, I think we've done an effective job, and some of the things I just want to point out that we have done, that we'll talk more about tomorrow, we were laying the foundation for, but we have not even begun to see the real impact of those changes, I think. Health insurance is an example. We're headed next year in the third year. We've had two straight years of actual rate declines in health insurance, and we're projecting a 0% increase next year in health insurance rates. It'll be three years in a row. We, we have not seen the impact yet of four of our seven bargaining units that have shifted to contributions towards their health insurance plans, and hopefully as we continue that process, getting towards 100% of our employees that are contributing towards plans, towards those premium shares. On the debt side, we are planning to prepay debt that will happen in a few years and save taxpayers about $2.4 million in interest rate, interest costs alone. That has not yet happened, but that is, you know, we're building that plan by putting funds into reserves to be able to do that. So there are a number of things here, again, that we put into place that we're starting to see the benefits from, and that I think we have a great story to tell Moody's, and we will, if we continue to make those investments and stay true to those values and those priorities, I think we're going to continue to see good results from that. So just a little tee-up from the discussion that we'll have tomorrow at our leadership team meeting. It's open to the public, anyone's welcome, and our employees, anyone who is welcome to attend, 9:00 a.m. in the Goodson Room at the Delta Campus. We'll talk about our current financial situation and our future outlook. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mokrheyski? I see none, so we'll move on to item B, which is a discussion of possible action, coordinated downtown development. Mr. Crainer? Mr. Mokrheyski, thank you.
Mr. Chair, just a quick tee-up on this item as Mr. Crainer gets the presentation ready. The board and the Eugene City Council took separate actions on the same day, December 14th, to pursue Scenario C, so you'll hear more about that and some proposed steps moving forward. I think what we're doing here today, we have two items for you to discuss. One is a draft letter and a memorandum of understanding that we sent to the city of Eugene to execute that lays out a process. The other is to pursue additional state funding for the purchase of property. And these really are intended to reflect the fact that this is what a decision looks like, that we, that both the board and the city council made a decision and have provided direction, and we're now here to follow up on that and make sure that we are moving forward actively and aggressively under the board's direction. So I'll turn over to Mr. Crainer to walk through the proposed next steps.
Thank you, Steve. Brian Crainer, Capital Projects Manager, here today to, again, talk about coordinated downtown development. That would be helpful to give you a sense, or to review where we've been and give you a sense of where we think we're heading and an opportunity to discuss what our planned approach is. I always like to start with some of these founding values that we really started this project with some time ago, but are always mindful of, especially as we transition from phase to phase and look to how we're going to guide the work upfront, is accountability, remaining accountable for the scope, schedule and cost, things we're continuing to define on a regular basis, but remaining mindful that we're accountable to the public as well as all our stakeholders on all those fronts. Collaboration, that's certainly been an upfront value as we've worked with the city through this most recent process and look to engage with them again on a successful outcome on this next phase. Transparency between the number of board meetings, joint elected official meetings, open houses, meetings with individual stakeholders, our website that we've established for this work. We're remaining mindful and looking forward to all the opportunities we can to remain transparent and open and get the information out there that the public's interested in. And finally, stewardship, really what this is all about, enhancing the services associated with the courthouse and managing our infrastructure in an appropriate way. So with those values in mind, we'll review a little bit of the history. You've seen this the last time we met, but I think it's important as we get into this discussion about where we're heading, going back to the early part of 2016 when we were successful with the legislature in securing some funding assistance for our planning effort, and then into May when we presented to you a facility needs assessment from the National Center for State Courts. At that time, the board, we discussed some development concepts, a wide range of development concepts, many of which required partnering with other groups, and at that time, the board asked us to reach out to the city and look at the potential for collaborating on potential coordinated downtown development scenarios. And in July of 2016, we really kicked that off with our first joint elected officials meeting where we discussed those potentials and commissioned a task force in August, and then in December, presented the final report to you from the joint task force on three different coordinated development scenarios. Subsequent to that joint elected officials meeting, each, the board and the city council met separately and passed motions that generally aligned with each other, or at least were compatible with each other. I've got them up there verbatim, but really the key takeaways are that you had directed us as staff to look at procuring the site of the former city hall for the purposes of citing the courthouse and to come back in January with a planned approach for doing that. There's also a direction with regard to continuing our work with the farmer's market on the potential future development of the Butterfly Lot and to continue working with our state partners on funding opportunities. Later in that same day, the city council met and passed a motion to begin negotiations with us on the purchase of the Butterfly Lot for the purposes of citing a city hall. So together, those essentially supported what was Scenario C and the joint task force's work, and we look forward to pursuing those together. Really briefly, pulled together a graphic, just in general terms, to kind of show you, you are here, more or less, in this, in this long process, and none of this is meant to be to scale, but only to kind of show orders and sequencing and where we've been and where we're heading. So you recall the facility needs assessment that NCSC gave us, that really gave us a better idea of what it is we're pursuing in terms of a courthouse concept. We took that, and that was very helpful and informative and engaging the city in our process in a citing study specifically for this project, looking where to cite the courthouse, but more broadly, how to coordinate downtown development in a way that houses a city hall, farmer's market, courthouse, and look for that win-win-win scenario. That produced the joint task force report on coordinated downtown development, and with that as a basis, both the city council and the board made a decision, provided direction to essentially pursue Scenario C. In order to do that, that requires the highest level of coordination between all the, well, maybe not the highest, but it requires the most upfront work in terms of changing ownership of properties. So right here in January 2017, we're beginning to embark on the site acquisition process, which is intended to result in each party having title to the properties that we wish to cite our projects on. Going down the line, just to kind of play this thing out, we've got a rigorous process after that where we're going to be in design and budgeting, but also working on construction funding, and that's more of an iterative cycle that we see, where the resources available are going to help dictate our design and scope, but the design scope's also going to dictate that funding we're seeking. So very open, rigorous, iterative process there to make sure we're balancing the needs and scopes of a courthouse with the funding available. And then from there, move into construction and completion of the project. So right now, you'll see in January 2017, we've got a memorandum of understanding that we're going to discuss with you today, that essentially sets the stage for that next phase with site acquisition and our partnering with the city. So memorandum of understanding that's included in your package is to hit some of the highlights. It's intended to establish the value of the subject properties and to resolve any limitations that we may identify through the process. Each party under the MOU agrees to disclose the relevant information we have about the properties we own, and the parties will have each of the properties appraised. Based on the appraisals, we're going to work together to establish a fair market value for the properties and use that fair market value as a basis for drafting the necessary agreements to exchange ownership and transfer the properties. So in terms of next steps, what we're here to discuss today, we're hopeful that the board's supportive and the county administrator and city manager can move forward to execution in the MOU, and then staff's eager to get to work in terms of. in the MOU, and then staff's eager to get to work in terms of exchanging the relevant information we have on file about the properties. To contract for the appraisal services, we'll need to appraise the properties, and then to work to establish the fair market values for each of the properties that we can agree on. And from there, draft the documentation or the documents necessary to exchange ownership and bring that forward to the board and council for consideration. So that's the bulk of our discussion today, but I did also want to let you know that there's a number of other fronts we'll be working on. This isn't our sole focus, although it's upfront and primary. We're also remaining mindful of opportunities to refile our petition with the circuit court with regard to the original land donation. We're hopeful that through this process and looking at the properties and the ownership exchange, that we can create the circumstances necessary for that to be a petition the judge can rule on as this matures and evolves further. We'll also be working at developing the request for proposals for the services necessary to expand the courthouse project team. As we look forward to the design phase, we'll be looking to bring on partners, most notably an architect, to help support that process and any number of other consultants and subconsultants. We're also going to remain mindful and continue our outreach and engagement with key stakeholders in the public. We anticipate expanding our web presence specific to this project as we produce more information and the project goals become clearer, and also continue our rigorous outreach and open house processes. We'll continue working with our state partners on project scope and funding assistance. The board item directly after this is focused on that funding assistance piece. We look forward to this discussion there. And then also, we'll continue our work to pursue additional funding so that we're not solely focused on the state funding assistance, but as other opportunities arise, given the number of functions and critical services that'll be housed in the courthouse and any funding assistance that may come with those, we're remaining mindful of. So that's the rundown. Again, the bulk of this discussion is around the memorandum of understanding included in your packet and the path forward and the approach that that outlines, and ensuring that we're being responsive to your direction on December 14th. Thank you.
Do you mind, Brian, bring back the next step slide? One prior to that. There we go. Okay, thank you. To the board then, discussion. Commissioner Licon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So you brought up something, Brian, that I think is, I think it's important as we go through this discussion, and that is, what's the courts going to do, what they're not going to do? I guess the question I have is that should we have a kind of a dual path here? Because if, you know, if we go through the work and then all of a sudden the courts come and establish that, no, sorry, but this is what this land is designated for, this is where you're going to build the courthouse. As you know, Scenario C, I believe, is clearly the first choice. It's my, it's my personal, and I think this board has made it pretty clear that's the scenario we clearly support. We heard from the judge, that's also the one that, from the court's perspective, is the most pragmatic, I guess. In a sense, he kind of came out and said, we could probably make A work, but that's not feasible. So my question really comes down to, should we have a dual path on this? Or how do we, how do we, how do we deal with this? Because the last thing we need is to be, all of a sudden, go through this process where I think we're all in agreement that, working on Scenario C, only to be shot down by the courts. That's the question I have. And I don't know, Steve, if you want to add part of this. Greg, obviously, you've been all part of this discussion. It's something that I would feel comfortable as far as, you know, how do we approach this? Because I really think we need to keep our minds open on this one, understanding that Scenario C is clearly our preferred choice.
Well, so, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Licon, the question is about the process for the resolution of the questions regarding the deeds?
It is. And the reason why I bring this up is because this, we're going to have the second piece of this with Alex coming forward, talking about the funding piece. And the last thing we need is to have, talk about funding, where the funding's going to go, and how the, let's say that that would, that's okay by the legislature, and that funding comes in place, but are they going to suggest, no, the funding needs to go where you're negotiating on Scenario C? Or how are they going to be open? So that's why I bring this up, because it's also based on the second part of the discussion.
It's a very important question, and it's one we remain mindful of until we get that absolute resolution of the courts. I'd respond in two ways. The first is, there is some confidence we're moving forward with, given that our legal counsel and the city's legal counsel agree on the interpretation of the feasibility of Scenario C. But we recognize the importance of having that verified by the courts. But that being said, the analysis that's been done, the very thorough analysis that we're all very familiar with on staff, gives us some confidence that we're moving forward with Scenario C on solid footing. Through our work in pursuing Scenario C, we're going to look for the first opportunity to refile that petition and take any action we need to, to make the circumstances for that appropriate. The other piece around the funding is a very important one, too, because we want to be responsive to our partners in Salem and make sure we're clear on where the money's going. And everything we've been doing, whether it's soliciting services for consultants or working with the state, has been mindful of the potential, whatever that potential is, for the site to change. We haven't procured the site, we don't have the site, it's not a certainty at this point. So when we talk about that, a lot of the state assistance is based upon the value of the property we plan to cite the courthouse on. And to the extent we can leave that flexible until there's certainty around that, we've tried to do so and be upfront with them on that. So in response to your question, essentially, yeah, the dual path, to the extent that it's not duplicating resources, is certainly one we're leaving open.
And one quick follow-up before Mr. Dingle, because I, thank you for coming down here. Obviously, you may have been watching this, so I appreciate that. The reason why I bring this up, because going through, we're, I would suggest we're probably going to have to eventually go out to the voters and maybe potentially fill in some gaps here on funding. I went through a similar scenario in Springfield, but $24 million is not, you know, $50 or $100 million. But it's the narrative. We need to establish a strong narrative through this whole process and where the public will feel confident. They know exactly, you know, if we even have to go out to the voters, they know exactly what they're buying and have a clear understanding what a new courthouse would mean for not only the state, but for Lane County, and what it means for the sheriff's department, for the DA, and all of our public safety entities in place. That's why I think it's important, just to make sure that the narrative would be established. We're going to go into it strong to make sure that there's going to be confidence from the public. Otherwise, we may be left holding a bag somewhere and a partially built something, and that would not look good for us. So I think your answer is great, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Licon. Mr. Dingle.
Chair for members of the board, just to follow up on Commissioner Licon's question regarding the next petition to determine whether or not the Butterfly Lot can be used by the city to build a city hall, farmer's market, those sorts of things. Do you recall that the ruling, which I believe I actually forwarded the signed ruling to everyone today, which may have prompted a comment by, question by Commissioner Licon?
No.
But you will recall, Judge Barron just did not feel that the process that there had been, that the parties had committed to enough of a decision that would trigger the court's authority to consider the petition and rule on the substance of the question. I believe, it's my opinion, that the MOU is another step in that process. My strong recommendation, and again, Mr. Klein can speak for himself, but I think he shares my view, and I know that I've talked to Mr. Crainer about this, is that we do not engage in serial step-by-step-by-step-by-step petitions to sort of, is this good, is this good, is this good? And it's my belief that once we have completed the process that's outlined in that MOU, the different steps that Mr. Crainer just outlined, we will in fact be at that point. Because essentially, when you read the MOU, that's what it says. And it's a matter of, at least the way that I read it and my conversations with Mr. Klein, counsel for the city, is that once those values, all of those different values are established, there's going to be that sort of trading process and calculating. And once that's done, the final step will be, it'll be essentially a purchase-sale agreement that's contingent upon the permitted use of the Butterfly Lot. I think once it reaches that point, there's just no question that you're at the point that a decision's been made, because there would actually be a signed agreement that would say, we're willing to, you know, we, meaning the city, is willing to do this, contingent upon being able to, this use. So hopefully, that answers your question, Commissioner Licon.
That suffices greatly, and I appreciate it. And Brian, thank you for your remarks as well, and it's obvious that you're thinking through this and making sure that, because it's going to be so important. And I will tell you that when we went through this process in Springfield, building the Justice Center, we had to have a clear objective. The narrative had to be strong, and it's still passed by a small margin. So it was not an overwhelming margin, but at the end of the day, it's clearly, the results are there. And like I said, $24 million is a lot different than whatever number we may end up on, which, of course, we don't know at this point in time.
Right, and that's great guidance, and we certainly are mindful of all those past successes on public projects. And then really, this most recent phase, it has been a lot of generalities about the specific facilities, because it was a citing study and where do these belong? But we're very excited and mindful of this transition to a closer focus on our project individually and specifically, and then the importance of outlining that to the public and why it's so critical.
Thank you. Thank you. And Commissioner Licon, I'm thankful for your historical perspective on that, from your experience in Springfield, which is, we can draw on most certainly. And we have the next steps up there. We're moving forward. In order to precipitate a decision by Judge Barron, we need to direct you to move forward with the next steps. Further discussion. Commissioner Sorenson.
I have a question back on the, on the graphic that you, Brian, put up. Yeah, there we go. Is this graphic on both the city hall and the courthouse? Or is it just the, is it just the courthouse?
It's just the courthouse.
Okay. I'm just wondering if the county has any role to play in whether, on the timing of the development of the city hall? In other words, we're trying to integrate what the state is doing in funding the courts, what the county is doing in funding the courts, and what the city is doing in funding the city hall. And I'm just wondering if there can be some kind of overture or involvement by the county in helping the city to save money by co-locating the city council and the city administrator where they are now, but making that more of a, making that more of a formal and longer-term relationship so that Harris Hall is not just the county building, or that the public service building is not just the Lane County, but in fact, it's a shared facility and one that, as far as I can tell, from both the county side and the city side, has worked well. And so it's not that there wouldn't be a new city hall, but it would be a city hall when we need a city hall. And if we don't need that now, or for the foreseeable future, maybe a 20-year agreement, then the Butterfly Lot could be transferred. As we envision, it would be a place where the farmer's market could occur, where perhaps parking could occur, where future planning could occur for the city. But meanwhile, a tremendous amount of money is saved. And if the county were not just the landlord, but in fact, in a joint relationship with the city, that this building wouldn't be solely the county's, but in fact, would be shared in the way it really is now. But legally, we have this memorandum of understanding that could be broadened so that wouldn't say Lane County only building, oh, by the way, City of Eugene's in the back, you know, but it would be in fact, a way to save taxpayer dollars, and it might even be something where we could share in the money from the city, the savings, that could be an incentive on the county side for the city to do this. And then eventually, we would be able, we, the citizens of Eugene, would be able to afford to build a really nice and well-developed and well-thought-out city hall when the need is shown. And I'm afraid that by doing both of these processes at once, that we're going to have the problem that Commissioner Licon just identified, and that is, well, wait a minute, why do we need this new building when we already have a courthouse? And the city, they leveled their city hall, and they've been getting along just fine without it, you know? And that really complicates it. Because, you know, when I go to things like the state of the city and state of the county yesterday and talk to people who have a, you know, a tangential relationship to Lane County government, and they say, by the way, what's going on over there? They leveled the block over there. What are they doing? Well, we're working, and we have this joint, da-da-da-da-da, and, you know, we hope it all work out. But meanwhile, if that graphic does in fact imply to some people that there's a city hall at the end, and that there's a county courthouse at the end, we're really kind of mixing our messages. And why not just take some pressure off of all this and go, hey, the county could be in a joint relationship with the city. We could use that stability, quite frankly. They could use that stability, and then we could work out, you know, the building that they need later. I don't kind of understand why we would want to complicate this, and why wouldn't we want to make it more simple? So just an idea. What do you think?
Mr. Chair.
Or they dug in on building a city hall, whether they need one or not?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Sorenson, I think, you know, what our focus has been on as it relates to the coordinated downtown development is really focused on the citing of these facilities, what the appropriate citing is in the long-term best interests of the respective organizations and the community as a whole. We've stopped short of saying, you know, of getting involved in the city's development process and financing process, and they've stopped short of getting involved in our development and planning and financing process. We're certainly open to ongoing conversations about how we can best utilize existing public spaces and share spaces and share services in any ways possible, how we can look at future developments and share services. I, for one, think that the city offices that have been in the public services building over the past several years has been, has worked really well from our perspective. And I think there are opportunities for, continue to look at, for opportunities for shared space and shared services in locations that make sense. So I think that's on the table, but we have, you know, again, to date, and we will continue to unless the board provides other direction, to focus our efforts on how best to cite these facilities, and then to focus our efforts in the county on the planning, design, financing, construction of the courthouse facility.
Well, how long is the city going to be in the county building?
I don't have an answer.
Well, that's part of our coordination. We should have an answer. If they're really going to build a city hall, we should know when they're leaving. And I personally think they shouldn't leave. I think it's saving people money, you know? I don't quite understand it. I really don't. I really, I have not had a cogent argument. I get it that we need a new state courthouse. I get that. I'm still not convinced that I've heard a rational argument that we need to have a city hall now. I get it. Eventually, when the need is there, when it's shown, but I think it's part of our job as the landlord for the city to negotiate a fair length of time. I would like to suggest we have a longer period of time. And that doesn't mean that anything on that graphic, that I'm opposing, anything on that graphic. I just think we ought to be actively talking about, well, if the city's going to be here for five more years, are we really going to just, you know, Lane County Public Service Building, when in fact, they are, they're our partners in this building?
I will say, the initial term of that lease has been extended a number of times, and we've worked closely with them, and they're a welcome tenant here. So from our perspective as a landlord, I can speak with certainty that we're in a position to facilitate their presence here and their timeline for their project. We're just not in a position, given our, we've been very clear in our respect for their individual project, despite our collaboration, that we remain mindful of our projects are separate, and what they're pursuing is not something I'm necessarily in a position to speak to.
Sounds like we can just keep extending this temporary agreement indefinitely, as long as there's no city hall for them to move into. Right?
Yeah, there's no foreseeable need for that space, and then...
Yeah, there's no foreseeable need for that space, and to the extent that you guys are sharing Harris Hall cooperatively, there's no reason why we would need to terminate that in the near term.
You know, I would just, Ms. Chair and Commissioner Sorensen, add a couple of things. We do have some long-term visions about the potential that if existing public service building space from the city vacating, it becomes available, we have some thoughts about additional county services that could be relocated into the Public Services Building, that if, you know, and really to look at this facility as a customer service, the downtown customer service center, where the public comes to engage with county services. I think there's also an opportunity, if you look at the existing courthouse, once the existing courthouse is vacated, and the question about what that existing facility becomes, if it's renovated, or if it's demolished and rebuilt, the potential opportunity there for shared services and consolidation of offices from various locations, both city and county services, is really, I think, has some outstanding potential. So I think that that option, that vision of co-locating city and county functions together is certainly on the table, and I think it will continue to be on the table in the short term, and we'll continue to work with the city on making space available in our buildings in the short term. And I think we, you know, will pursue opportunities, particularly with the current courthouse once it's vacated, to look at consolidation of our functions together.
Well, when I take an oath of office, like I did yesterday, I'm not just taking an oath of office to, like, put my head in the sand when I see the federal government or the state government, or the city government, or the county government, doing things that seem like it might benefit from our input. And I feel like this is something where we could give them a tremendous opportunity to save money, have an orderly planning process, have us have an orderly planning process for our own building and our own structure, make it more welcoming, so that the people in Eugene see it as a Eugene and shared facility, and I think it would save the taxpayers money. And I just think that nothing in the decisions we've made thus far in the last couple of weeks is altered by those comments. And I just think it's something that, when we have a fresh start here, we should be thinking big, and we should be thinking about ways of accommodating legitimate public needs and ways to save money. So I'll just leave it there.
Thank you, Commissioner Sorensen. Yeah, Commissioner Sorensen raises a good question, and one that I believe, looking at the chart and the deliberative process that we've gotten, that's gotten to this point right now, and it's been a very deliberative process with some very tight timeframes that have been adhered to. I believe you've answered the questions as well as you can at this point in time. So thank you for the statement regarding our long-term association with the city, and for opportunities for the future, for a conversation on sharing services. Those will be discussions that we have down the road as we get more information in place. Further discussion, questions? That being said, Mr. Mokrize, what we have before us is a December 28 MOU that you've written, addressed to Mr. John Reeves, city manager. I understand the city council will be meeting tomorrow at noon, and I believe that this will be a part of their agenda tomorrow. Is that correct, to your knowledge?
I'm not aware that it is on their agenda. I think there's certainly a possibility there could be a discussion about this issue generally.
Okay.
We're not, you know, we're not asking the board for formal action on this. What we've submitted to city officials is this MOU, and we're hoping that we can get this MOU executed in short order, so that we can, we really can't move forward and pursue the appraisals and the disclosure of information negotiations on these properties until we've agreed on a process. And so that's what this MOU does, is it agrees to a process to make those things happen. You know, what would be helpful for me to hear from the board, and for all of us to hear from the board, is your support for what's been, for what we've articulated in the communications and in the MOU, or if you have concerns, you want to see something different, you know, let us know.
Perfect. Ms. Crainer, can you bring the next step slide back up? Then, basically, you'd like us to give you approval or direction to move forward with the next steps, and await the decision by the City of Eugene in response to the MOU that's already been provided to them? Do you need a motion on that, or just the general direction from the board?
General direction is...
Okay. Then, without any opposition, the general direction as outlined on next steps, is any questions or comments regarding that?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, Mr. Commissioner Liken, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so I support this, and, but again, just to be mindful of, we know from the perspective of what the court's decision may or may not be. And that's all I'm asking for, is just to be mindful of that. But as far as the MOU, I support. I think we move forward on that.
Can you click then to the next slide, which is parallel process? And so between the next steps and parallel process, the board then is, we've heard your discussion, we've seen what we've done so far, and just give you directions to move forward with what's outlined in next steps and parallel process. And I, for one, will be sitting at the city council meeting tomorrow, just in case they do bring up the discussion, and to see, I'll make a report back what I hear. And that starts at noon tomorrow here. So, very good. Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Crainer. I'm Stingle, thank you very much. Then we'll move forward with the continuation on the same topic, basically, but this time we're going to be talking about what's happening in Tillamook County, or not happening in Tillamook County. And while you get your place, Mr. Kyler, I'll mention that in 1965, I walked into the Tillamook County Courthouse, which was about 30 years old at the time, and it was beautiful. And there's a sign on the door that said, "No calks," C-A-L-K-S. And I didn't, I had no clue what a calk was, until somebody inside the building said, "That's what most people in Tillamook County wear around town. It's the studded boots you climb on logs with." So none of those Tillamook County Courthouse. Mr. Kyler.
Thank you, Chairman Farr and board members. I'm Alex Kyler, your Intergovernmental Relations Manager. So before you have a packet that continues this conversation, as Mr. Crainer referred to, one of the things, one of the elements of the motion that you made in December was to continue to pursue state funding. So we started to look at that, and about that same time, saw the action by Tillamook County. So a little bit of background here is that in, as this process of courthouse funding around the state evolved, some of the early folks into the queue for state funding included Multnomah County, Tillamook County, Jefferson County, Lane County, and in 2015, there was dollars authorized for state bonding authority during the 2015 legislature that went to Multnomah, Tillamook, and Jefferson Counties. Those, and we had expected, if you recall, to be in that list, but for whatever reason, we're not in that list at the end of the session. And we were then successful in 2016 in sort of regaining a spot on that bond authorization. So that bond authorization from the 2015 and 2016 legislatures results in bond sales that are scheduled to occur in, we think, April of this year, 2017. In December, the Tillamook County Board of Commissioners, on a 2-1 vote, voted to cease their work on a replacement project because of a lack of ability to raise the necessary matching funds to the $8 million bond authorization that they had received in 2015. And so that was sort of of interest to us, as we were examining options for state funding. As you recall, we'd previously gone to the legislature and really suggested that we would not be coming back until 2019 for a request to really finalize our project at that point in time. That world has changed a little bit, now that our project has been accelerated by the actions of not only the Board of Commissioners, but the Eugene City Council, with respect to these opportunities for land purchases in downtown Eugene. So one of the things that we think is an opportunity here is to see if we can get legislative action that would reassign that previously provided bond authorization for Tillamook County to be, to go instead to Lane County. And I think the vehicle for that is called the rebalance bill, which is one of the early budget bills out of any regular legislative session. And the purpose of the rebalance bill is to go back over the biennium and make any sort of last-minute changes that are necessary in terms of financial issues that have occurred as the biennium evolves. And so we are now, even as I speak, there in organizational days in Salem, so there's a lot of work going on, on that rebalance bill, probably even today, by legislative fiscal office, to make sure that they're making all the necessary adjustments. This letter that is before you in your packet would make known your interest in seeing if this mechanism could be utilized for Lane County. And so the letter goes, would go to the co-chairs of the Ways and Means Committee, Representative Nancy Nathanson and Senator Richard Devlin. And I think without their support, this mechanism will be much, much more difficult. We have had some initial conversations with the Judicial Department staff about this, and there wasn't, they didn't hang up on us. There was definitely some thinking about, well, can this work, and what would need to be done, and what the timelines are, and sort of trying to understand the situation down here. But, you know, I think it's a, given the, you know, the disciplined approach that the county and the city have brought to this effort, I think that the letter is really just an extension of that. It's a very formal request for consideration of something that, while a bit out of the ordinary, is certainly not without precedent, there, as I indicate in the packet, there is, even in 2015, you can see there was some project reassignment work done in the bond, bonding, in the rebalance bill. Granted, that was for an entity that had bond authority in 2015 and changed its project. So it wasn't transferring bond authorization from one local government, for example, or one state agency, to a different agency. But I think nonetheless that we've got a fairly realistic shot at this. If we can make the adequate case to the co-chairs about the process as it's evolved, and our ability to take advantage of this will really accelerate our project, so that when we go back in 2019, we are much better positioned for completing the project shortly thereafter. So the opportunity here is that the way the structure works with the state funding is that we take the property valuation, and I think it's important, to your point, Commissioner Liken, we could take the property valuation of the Butterfly Lot, or the property valuation of the City Hall site. And essentially, those are dollars that the county has or will expend. We put that into the courthouse capital construction improvement fund, and that leverages a matching amount that comes back out. So the amount that we put in comes back out, and those dollars become available to the capital project manager for design work, which is really the next, the next phase of where we're at. And so we would have a much better situation than we have currently with respect to the state dollars that this land valuation would leverage. So I think at that, I will stop and entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Kyler. We have the letter before us, well-written letter, and one, the last sentence in particular really sums everything up. "If we can be successful with this rebalance opportunity, we'll continue the momentum our partnership has built, while also creating the accountability necessary for our project to get to be supported by the local community." Thank you. Questions or comments? Commissioner Liken, then Commissioner Bozovic.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think, based on the prior discussion and moving forward on the MOU, that's a good message to send, and I think it just strengthens, strengthens what's in the letter. Several years ago, the City of Seaside, and I'm going to do something a little bit different here, but City of Seaside, what they were, there was a major transportation project in place. The voters actually stepped up and rejected ODOT money. They said, "We don't want it. We don't want, we stay out of it." That freed up those dollars. Approximately $3 million of that, I think it was $3 million, $3 million of that went into I-5 Beltline interchange. So I think precedent like this is clearly set and established from, as far as the state's concerned, that if one area isn't able to accommodate dollars that are being set aside, especially from state funding, dollars then can go back to whomever is next in line. And clearly, I think there's no doubt about it. Lane County has, I think we've established ourselves in not just being next in line. We're getting, getting close to being ready to go. And so I think this is a good establishment. I think the prior discussion that we had by moving, in suggesting that we agree on moving forward in the MOU, I think this really sets this thing in motion, and so this letter's very good. And I think Commissioner, Chair Farr, reading that last paragraph, I think really makes this thing go. So I appreciate this. I'm very supportive, and I think this really gets things established.
Timing seems good. Further discussion, Commissioner Bozovic?
Thank you. So the original process for setting up the bonding priorities and all that has been set forth and through the Department of Justice, and they set up a court facilities task force through the Association of Oregon Counties to make those recommendations to the DOJ, and then to carry them forward into the legislature for these bonding priorities. Yesterday, the Association of Oregon Counties Public Safety Committee met, and there was some discussion about this, and whether this should be sent back down to the task force or not, and, which I'll just mention as an aside, yesterday I was also appointed the new co-chair of the Public Safety Committee for the future. I wasn't chairing yesterday, but I will possibly be in the future. Can you, you know, quickly summarize what the decision point was on whether there needed to be referral back down to the task force, and what went on to the Legislative Committee, and where that ended up?
Chairman Farr and Commissioner Bozovic, I was in attendance at the Public Safety Committee. I was not in attendance for the Legislative Committee, so I don't know that it, that this discussion advanced to the Legislative Committee. However, at the Public Safety Committee, there was a report from the courthouse task force. I did bring up this, I wanted people to know that this letter was in the works. I had suggested that, I didn't think there was any sort of policy guidance set up by that courthouse task force that would really address this kind of thing, and that the reason that I was informing folks was just to be more informational than anything. There was some discussion about whether they should send it down to the committee for more review, and ultimately decided that the informational piece was enough, and to just keep them informed of our efforts. So that was the, that was the information that I took away from the meeting. Like I said, I was not there for the full Legislative Committee, so I don't know if it came up during that conversation.
And, Mr. Bozovic, I can address to that real quick. Sorry, Mr. Chair. The only thing, action item from the Public Safety Committee was the adoption of the principles. That was it. So there was no discussion on this particular piece.
Thank you, Commissioner Liken.
I just, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that, you know, there wasn't really a request to send this back down to the task force, and there was kind of a consent in the room and on the folks that are on the telephone, basically, that for Lane County to go forth and make an attempt to redirect these funds without having to go back into that process.
Thank you. We have them before us, a draft of a letter by, put together by Mr. Kyler for consideration for the discussion to the letter. Then, without objection, I think we'd direct you to go ahead and complete the letter for signature, Mr. Mokrize. Complete the letter for signature, and we can get that signed as early as today, and move it along to Representative Nathanson and to Senator Devlin, the co-chairs of the House of Legislative Ways and Means. And they're meeting this week. They organized yesterday, they're in organization, so I would guess if we get it to them today or tomorrow, they'll read it today or tomorrow. Any further discussion? Ms. Kyler, you need anything more from us? Very good. Mr. Crainer, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good discussion today. Good discussion today. Moving forward, timing's good. Our momentum is strong, and I'm some excited about the direction we're going. Back to the agenda then. We have, let's see, county admin, Commissioner's business. Any Commissioner's business? Commissioner Lichen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I do want to announce that Mayor Lombard will be giving her State of the City address in Springfield on Thursday, the 12th, beginning 5:30, and that's at the Wildish Theater, and so, all are invited to attend that. And I wanted to also express my major thanks to Commissioner Stewart for allowing me to miss the State of the County address yesterday and to be in Salem. We ended up having a pretty productive and very strong conversation on our Transportation Committee. It turns out that the inaugural address by Governor Brown, she clearly made transportation package one of her top priorities moving forward. And so, it really puts the counties, I think, in a really good position to really work with our legislative delegation. And I think I mentioned this before, both the House and the Senate Transportation Committees are going to stay in effect. They're going to stay, and it's going to be a joint committee all the way through, so they will not be split. So, all decisions will be made just by the one single committee involving the House and the Senate representatives. And of course, our own State Senator Byer is the chair of the Senate side, which is going to be very beneficial on that. The other thing she talked about, which I felt to be a great signal, was a strong handout to rural Oregon. And I must tell you, coming from Governor Brown, that was somewhat unexpected. So, I thought it was outstanding, because as we know, Lane County is a very rural county with a major metro area, and so, that was a very, very good communication, I thought, to our counties throughout the state. I'll add more in our leadership work session tomorrow because we received an update from Chair Banyan, the Oregon Transportation Commission, and expect the OTC to be very aggressive as well, and really, I think, showing strong leadership through trying to get a package together. But you're talking about significant dollars just on the state system, not including the county and the cities. The other thing that's going to be key is that the AOC and LOC will be working very strongly together on this moving forward. So, the counties and the cities will be working in coordination. So, I'll add more about that tomorrow at the leadership team. But again, Commissioner Stewart, thank you very much for allowing me to attend those meetings in Salem yesterday. Appreciate it.
And I'm glad you were able to be there, Commissioner Lichen. I was there on Friday for the AOC Housing Committee meeting and had a chance to talk with Senator Byer briefly, and I let him know, essentially what you just said, that some of the most important legislation that's going to happen this year during the legislative session is what goes through that joint committee. Further, Commissioner's business? Commissioner Bozovic?
Just want to tag on to Commissioner Lichen's remarks and note that Representative Catty McEwen, who represents West Lane County in Florence, is also the other, the House side chair. So, Lane County is well-represented on that Transportation Committee, and we have been very helpful as a board with the Coos Bay Rail Line. And Representative McEwen, a former Port of Coos Bay Commission Chair, appreciates us. So, I think we, you know, as they develop that, you know, our previous cooperation with them, I think, is going to gain us much better access and cooperation in this transportation bill. So, I'm really looking forward to a good bill coming out of this session. I'm hopeful on that, and I think it'll be helpful with our infrastructure and the focus on infrastructure now that's going throughout the nation, discussion on aging infrastructure. We really could use some help from the state and the federal government on both those areas.
Thank you. And further Commissioner's business? And I think I'll state that Lane County is pretty well-served in leadership positions in the legislature this coming session. As Commissioner Bozovic just mentioned, Catty McCount, who's not from Lane County, does represent a significant chunk geographically of Lane County. Also, with Representative Nathanson as co-chair of Ways and Means, and our new State Senator, James Manning, is on Ways and Means and also is co-chair of the pretty significant government Ways and Means Subcommittee. So, we're doing well in Salem this time, lots of chances for us all to visit and make our important issues well-known to them. Any further Commissioner's business? And I'll just state a correction. I said that the listening session is tonight at the Ford Center. The listening session on equity and access is on January, on the 12th of January, which is this coming Thursday, and it'll be repeated on February 2nd. Further Commissioner's business? And seeing none, do we have any agenda team requests? Announcements? And today, we have no executive session, so we will enter into recess until 1:30, when we'll reconvene in Harrisall at 1:30. We are recessed.